Return from executive meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. For those who came in late, we had an executive session for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of an employee who are official. Executive session, and I would now invite those who wish to join us in the pledge of allegiance. May we have a motion to approve the agenda? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move now to public participation. And the first item on public participation is a presentation by our Assistant City Manager, Jessica Green. Thank you very much, Jessica. Thank you for the handout.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm old enough to still really like paper sometimes. And it'll be easier for you to see. So I just wanted to do a mid-year touch base on where we are in our 2022 goals. I feel that when you kind of take the time to kind of do a check-in on how you are versus what you said you're going to be doing, sometimes you're reminded of like, oh yeah, we need to get to working on that. I don't know why this isn't opening. One moment, please. Thank you. Okay, Joe saved the day. So what I've done here is I've sorted it by goal category and then our progress to date. And I'm only going to go through just kind of a quick touch base on some of the bigger ones that we've achieved to date. So the first one in the category of climate is where we've applied for a grant for electric charging stations in the uptown parks. And so you can see that's 100%. We've applied for the grant. We're hoping to hear back by December if we've been awarded. The other is the continued planning of the five megawatt solar facility. That design is underway. And then we continue to work toward our climate mitigation plan under the Global Covenant of Mares. So those are the kind of the high points from climate. Moving down to the next section, which is our communications and public access. This is kind of a lot of behind-the-scenes work, but I wanted to let you know that we've been working really hard on cloud records retention. And so we have found a vendor, we have a scanner, we have all the tech now. And so now we're working on the taxonomy, like the organization of the files that we're going to enter and how we're going to tag and file them so that they can be retrieved easily. We also have narrowed our vendor for a new agenda minutes provider that will do live streaming. And we are doing a review with that with all department heads in late July, and then we hope to then take the next steps with them. So we're well on our way toward that.
I'm wondering, just while we're on the subject of the minutes, I know that we have a transcription of the minutes, but I'm wondering whether that needs to be reproduced. That's a lot of paper that goes out. Could it become available to those who want to read it and not necessarily reproduced in our packets and for the public?
Yeah, we don't make very many copies. We make copies for you and like just a few. But yeah, we can even limit it more if you'd like.
Because I don't, I don't go through and read that part of it.
You were there, right?
I read the minutes. And I don't necessarily read the transcription, although if something came up, it's good to know that it's available if anybody wants it.
Yeah, we can, we can cross that, like-
I'm looking at council to see if anybody has a problem with that.
I hate paper.
Okay, we'll shrink it down.
Shrinker, shrinker down.
Sounds good. You will, that'll make Heather very happy. And then the other is the comprehensive plan. You know, I wanted to kind of give you an update, you know, after the focus groups and steering committee meetings and public meetings, they have developed our chapters, they've developed objectives, and now we're working with our consultant to develop our action steps. And our hope is to then bring those to the steering committee in August and then to the full public in early fall. So we're really starting to come down the path of getting our action items together for the coming years. Under the diversity, equity, inclusion category, I wanted to let you know that we have made a conditional offer to a very strong candidate for the social services liaison position. That individual is undergoing a pretty thorough background screening right now, and when complete, we will be happy to announce that position. In the category of economic development, I go up a page here. Wanted to let you know that on the categories of DORA and the Red Brick Fridays, you know, that's, we have several Red Brick Fridays planned. We have the DORA expansion in front of you next meeting. And we are also working at, working at workforce housing models to see how we can connect employers with available housing in town. We're really working a lot with creative placemaking strategies, like we work with the art center on the movies on the same night as the Red Brick Fridays and looking at the Oktoberfest. So those are things we're working on now. And those are our big updates under economic development. Under fiscal responsibility, we were awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and also awarded the awards for Outstanding Popular Annual Financial Reporting. So congratulations to Joe's team on that. And then we are really close on the GOV OS rollout, which is the short-term rental tax collection. So we really think we're going to be able to go live in late July with that, and we're going to hope for the last two quarter and a half of collections of that tax. Then we move into housing. And you'll see that the bar gets a little lower on our progress, but it doesn't mean there's not a lot of work going on. What it does mean are these goals are long-term calls. And so the steps we take could be, they seem smaller, but they just take longer to achieve. So we'll have some updates, I think, and the next update on our progress towards some of our housing goals, because we're, we're working on them. I just don't have, like, for example, we're drafting the RFQ for a nonprofit right now. We're drafting the RFP for the master plan, but it's not done yet, so we can't mark yet. And then under infrastructure, or excuse me, human resources, I do want to kind of brag on Kim Newton with human resources and then Katrina and Heidi in finance. This new pay loss software was a lot of work, but now that we're up with it, it is amazing. We're getting ready to now be able to have people be able to apply online. They can do their onboarding online. So instead of meeting, for example, with hundreds of teen new employees for the pool, we can say, dear X Y Z team, here's all your onboarding paperwork. Do it with your parents at home. It's pretty magical. But it was a lot of work to get there. So congratulations to them. And then under infrastructure, wanted to point out that the interior and exterior coating of the water, the water tank is almost complete. And we have an RFQ released for the water softening project. And those are some really big ones there. And then, as you know, the ramp improvement in the sidewalk for the C W G funds is underway. And then under public safety, we have achieved the goal of the new central square RMS system, which I was like, well, what, what is that? But it's their case management software, and it's part of our partnership with Butler County and the 911 system. And this was a really big to-do. If you've ever had to migrate your case management systems and all those records, it's a lot of work to take on new documentation software. So they did, they have done that. And the other is we have two new candidates who are going through screening for, oh, actually, they've been hired, actually, it's new two, I can't speak, two new police officers who will be starting, who started the academy today, correct? So we're really happy to have them onboard. So they're conditional offers while they finish the academy. And then they're beginning the implementation of the LexiPaul policy management software, which is really great because it keeps you up to date on all, all the policies coming down from especially the state level, makes sure that our records are up to date as well. So those are the high-level updates I wanted to give you today. I'm happy to answer any questions. And you have the full report here if you'd like to look at it more closely. And we will be posting this on our website, hopefully by early next week for the public to see as well.
Does anyone have questions, Jessica? Thank you.
I asked you, sorry. There were some questions I know from the public about the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement and, and creating a statement that would be part of different grants that we submit, sort of a standard Oxford DE and I statement. Is there any movement on that or do you know what, what I'm talking about?
I actually have to admit that I do not really remember that goal, but it doesn't mean we can't work on something like that. So if that's something we want to draft and get ready, we could probably do that this year or by early '23, you know, kind of, and it would be nice to have a nice standing value statement that we can use as we look for grants and projects and things like that.
That would be great. The other statement that I want to say, because I'm already imagining a little pushback on seeing something related to policing next to diversity, equity, and inclusion, but I want to say that I support that because the whole push to have a police, a social service liaison came out of 2020 and came out of a proposal that was put forth by Black Lives Matter Oxford and then was worked out with the police and then brought to the Police Commission. So just to sort of state, you know, if members of the public see this and see something related to policing next to DE and I, that's the history of that. And, and I think having, you know, that police social worker liaison will be really helpful in meeting the needs of the community in ways that, you know, our, our police officers just can't be stretched so much to have to do. So thank you.
Thank you for that history and background.
On, on that same page, what, how do you plan on doing a diverse pool of applicants under the hiring for police? Like, what's the strategy?
So we do a really robust advertising. I'm really impressed with how much our police department goes into recruitment. They go to recruitment fairs, they go to different colleges, they pay extra to have it put into different publications that reach different audiences. And then, then from there, we do, our advertisement true is, is you don't have to be a certified police officer. We'll put you through training, so all are welcome to apply, and then we'll train you. We'll send you to the academy, really trying to get rid of barriers of someone entering into the police world. And then we do still have, it is still a classified position with a test and, and an agility skill test. And so that, those are hard. And then the pool that we're left with is who we then interview and provide conditional offers to based on their background screening. So the recruitment effort is very, very wide.
That's awesome. And does that apply for someone before they have their bachelor's? Or is it only after they get their bachelor's?
We do. We do not require bachelors, but I'll tell you that our officers, for the most part, if they, they most have containment education. But no, they don't have to have a bachelor's at this time.
So there could be someone who wanted to just go to the academy. You don't need a bachelor's to go to the academy?
No, you could go like through Butler Tech or, what's the other one? Cincinnati Scarlet Ops, thank you. Those are the regional ones.
Other questions? Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Very good report, and we're glad to keep updated. So we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our printed agenda was a public hearing, but that public hearing is premature and we will have it at our next meeting. So there will not be a public hearing. If anyone here was hoping to speak to DORA, they can do so under the next item, which is public comments. And at this time, anyone wishing to address counsel about items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, we invite you to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you five minutes to talk to us about whatever you want. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Branstrider. I live at 18 Meadow Circle, and I would like permission to pass a flyer around. I did not make flyers for everybody because I didn't want to cut down that many trees, but we can pass this around. You're welcome to photograph it with your phone. You might have gotten emails about this. We're, we're like saturating. But this is the, about the presentation next Monday at six o'clock at Oxford Seniors by Jonathan Levy about the data that he's been collecting about what to expect for climate change in southwest Ohio, which is going to be valuable information for a number of committees that are working on climate change things. And I've, I've seen a few of his graphs preliminarily. There's a lot of good information there. So we're hoping for a good turnout. I want to make sure that everybody in this room is aware.
Absolutely.
So with your permission, I will start a flyer.
I recommend you give it to Heather.
Okay.
And she can make sure, she'll send it out on an email so that everybody gets it. And then it'll be on a electronically.
Okay. And I've got an electronic copy that I can get you. I need your email.
Okay, that's the best way, I think.
But I just want to make sure that everybody's aware because I really think this is going to be a valuable piece of information.
Super. Thank you very much. Would anyone else wish to address counsel this evening? Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? All those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We have resolutions. Now, I have a question for our law director.
Yes, sir.
Do we have to read this since we're not going to have it on our agenda? Really, we're not, we're putting it off till next time?
Maris Navy, just a motion to table it would be fine, and then, okay, take off the table at the next, the next session.
I would entertain a motion to table the resolution amending the application for a DORA. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we really need to have that on the 19th because of the number of days. This is an explanation for those who are wondering. Now you may read our second resolution.
A resolution approving the amended amortization schedule for LogCon Enterprises LLC.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Jessica?
Good evening. So this is a suggested kind of renegotiation of the loan for Longcon Enterprises, also known as Church Street Social. Excuse me. It entered into a seven-year loan with $63,250 in May of 2019. They then made their payments through March 2020. In April 2020, during the pandemic, we suspended payments on revolving loans for a period of time. In the fall of '21, we reinstated those payments, and other applicants have started paying it back. Church Street Social asked, we approached them and kind of said like, hey, like, what can we do to help you work this out? And they indicated that they needed to renegotiate their loan terms. And so recommending to you tonight a renegotiation of their loan for the remaining $57,909.11 for fif, excuse me, 75 more months, starting on October 1st, 2022. That gives them a few more months to kind of get their business back when the students return, and then we'll proceed with that loan agreement going forward. And then we also will change it from 3% interest to 0% interest. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this item before council? Seeing none, questions or comments for council?
So we, go ahead. We discussed this in the CIC, and this is a personal opinion of mine, but any local businesses that are ran by local individuals, we want to see thrive. And this is just a, a way that we can keep that going.
Absolutely.
Are the other businesses that have a revolving loan fund at 3%?
No, they are not. So the only other active, larger revolving loan fund that we have right now is with Moon Co-op, and I believe they're at 1%. And then the other ones that we have that are active are the smaller emergency loans that we did, and they're all at 0%.
Any other questions?
Yeah, are we questioning or are we opinionating now?
Either. Both.
Yeah, I mean, I want to help out local businesses, so as long as we afford other businesses in the same situation, the same grace, I'm all for it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and good luck. Church Street Social, we hope they are successful. You may read the third resolution.
A resolution authorizing the donation of $25,000 to the Family Resource Center as a sub-recipient of American Rescue Plan Act funds, which shall be used for their housing case management position.
Your motion?
Still move.
It's been moved to adopt and seconded. Jessica?
Welcome back.
Hello again. Last year, we gave the Family Resource Center a donation from our CARES Fund to assist with a part-time case management position to help with housing. And that individual was able to help 13 families find permanent housing. And I just, I was so impressed by that. And so when we started really thinking about our American Rescue Plan funds and really think about future sustainability, and then the short-term rental tax that we're trying to do, I was like, you know, we have this gap year sort of while we get this short-term rental tax off the ground. But in theory, that tax would be around 20 to 25,000 a year that we can put toward this housing case manager, in theory. But in this gap year, I'm recommending that we put 25,000 of our American Rescue Plan funds toward this position so they can keep this position going, continue to help families find permanent housing, with the goal that sustainability in the future will come from the short-term rental tax in, in the future. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Seeing none, council discussion? Does anybody else think this is an awesome idea?
Great idea.
I think you've got positive nods all around. Good job on that. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. And we'll move now to ordinances, first reading. When you're ready.
An ordinance repealing and replacing sections 13901, 13902, and 13903 of the codified ordinances of the city of Oxford pertaining to the Student Community Relations Commission.
Hey, Jessica.
This is the Jessica Show this evening. With this one, the Student Community Relations Commission has made the recommendation to change the organization of their membership. And this really stems from a challenge to get all of the right seats at the table the way it was currently set up. And so they had several meetings on this, and this is their recommendation, which we do support. And the largest changes is it amends it from a letting 11 voting members down to eight, and from 12 ex officios down to 11. And it goes into a detail about who those people are and allows for a little bit more flexibility. But we do think that the smaller board size will allow for them to meet quorum and have more engaged people at the, at this commission. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance first reading? I have one question for Chris. Well, not for Chris, for you. So if there are four, if there are eight members, what's a quorum? I know if there were nine, the quorum would be five. If there's, if it's an even number, what makes the quorum? Is it four or is it still five? I should have warned you that I was going to ask that. I apologize. I've been thinking about it, but.
I would be happy to look into that and verify that for you for the next, second reading.
Look into that before the second, just so we know, because that was one of the reasons that they want to make this change, was that they were having difficulty meeting the quorum.
Understood. I'll be happy to look into that and get that answer for you.
Well, knowing the history of the definition of a quorum, I think quorum means a majority. I think you'd have to have five, even though there's only eight members.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably true as well.
That, yeah, that sounds, that sounds right. I can certainly confirm for you.
And I think that would be preferable since you have two separate groups you'd have buy in from at least some of the groups.
So it, it, right now, they have 11 members?
Well, yet.
Voting members?
11 ex officio.
Yeah, 11 ex officio and, and eight voting members. So the-
Well, how many do they have now?
They have, I've got it here.
They have 11 voting members now. And honestly, their seats sit vacant, to, to be honest. And so this is a realignment of seats that they think they can actually fill.
So the quorum issue is really only reducing it, and that's kind of where I was going, from six to five.
And I think the difficulty was that they wanted to have an even number of community residents and even number of Miami. So they came up with four and four.
All right.
I can provide some history on that.
Please, go ahead.
So the commission wanted to reduce the quorum from six to five. And it was understood that we are only going down one individual for quorum. However, that was typically the amount of voting members that would show up, regardless of if there were 11 voting members or not.
Okay.
The, the change in the mix was mainly Greek life and other organ, student organization-based individuals, like representatives. So that's why there's some detail about what the position or what the seats or like what individual would be in those seats, and we just broadened the requirement, not requirement, the definition of who's going to be in what seat to try to get more volunteers for those seats. But at the same time, reducing the voting members in order to easier, more easily reach a quorum. The ex officios were based on that same thing. So it was student organizations that typically didn't show up. So we reduced that and then it broadened the scope of the individuals that could hold that ex officio seat.
Okay, thank you very much. It's helpful. Anyone have any questions or concerns? Yes.
And Maris Navy, I just consulted Robert's rules, and I can confirm that a quorum is five.
Thank you. I thought it was. All right. Any further discussion? We will have this second reading at our next meeting. You may read the third, I guess, the second ordinance. Sorry.
That's okay.
I jumped ahead of myself. So I, I did not hear what you said. Okay, the next item, you may read.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for Owl's Landing Block A with conditions.
Okay, and I think Sam will lead us through this one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the Owl's Landing final subdivision plat, and as I warned you previously, you'll see this one last time. So you've heard about this subdivision a lot. This is, this is actually the first phase. So there's 39 lots that would be created with this plat, and this step would actually allow for the developer to record the lots and sell them. And you're also approving the names of the streets as well, since these would be, these would be streets. Although these would be private streets, there's still a process that, that this is taking place. And since it's Owl's Landing, there's an Owl theme that you see there in the street names.
Is it Screech Avenue? Did I read that right?
It is.
Okay.
And then the, so this would not be creating, this would not be established- And then the, so this would not be creating, this would not be establishing the lots for the, for the rear portion. This would only be for the front half, or it's called Block A in the plat. And the applicant's representative, due to an unexpected illness, wasn't able to attend tonight, so he sends his apologies.
We'll forgive him officially. So, yeah. I'm sorry, I screwed the chair up.
We did run the...
Are there other Owls?
There are some other Owls, yes. We did run the names by public safety and cross-checking with all the different, to make there's, make sure there's not a phonetic or a similar.
I'll hold off on my comment here.
There's not a Screech Owl, is there?
There is a Screech Owl. There is.
There's, there's a Screech Owl. Okay. Okay.
Learn something new every day.
Yes, you do. I could now offer the opportunity if anyone from the public would like to address this first reading of the ordinance. Now would be your opportunity. Seeing none, counsel? Commentary, questions, issues?
Oh, I just asked, did you want to talk about this?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Then that would be the time. You're public, come on up.
That's your key.
As a matter of fact, I don't exist, I don't give you nine-one-one service. And when I do, I get taken to a mental hospital. I was born in nineteen fifty-nine, my name's Donaldan Cross, Day is my maiden name. I'm Blackfoot. Aboriginal. Algonquin, I don't know the language, I was denied it. I was taken, my home, on Main Street. And my dad was put in prison, in Lebanon. Which he spent until he had to sign on parole to get the farm up, which is lauded right there at East Woods on Brown Road. Fifty-three thirty-six is where I grew up, on S R. You walked all over me on a trust, you stole my inheritance, and you're not gonna do it anymore. I'm Blackfoot, and you're here. You broke all the laws that you can possibly break with me and still do it. I don't want your Butler County, whoever they are, City of Oxford, and they're snot on my windows, staring through my cracks, coming in my house, gonna break it in, and they have no pink slips. These are underneath match two, I have the book, the multi-quar. And that boy just did it, huh? They're spying on my phone. Got it all right here. Yeah, how about Wagner? Need to get it off. I don't have trespassing under their key my whole, they just got on my joint account.
I want you to direct your comments to the council. Would you please, excuse me, excuse me, would you please direct your comments to the council?
I'm sorry, I'm upset, I'm doing just as civil as I can right now.
I appreciate that.
I've been drugged with medicine I'm not supposed to have. And I have gone through my hearing, and I'm sure people in here heard. Supposed to be private, under the witness protection program. Only United States under Donald Trump's watch turned their back on me. Get me horrible, I mean, horrible. Killed my dogs, right down here, the bed. City cops, they aren't coming over there, and they'll ask me without even being sent. Want to know if I had a dead, that I had a dead puppy. Forty-five hundred dollars, my name is, pure breed dogs, I've been here. July fourteenth is my birthday, sixty-three. I don't know what you guys think, you're fooling, but I could have retired at sixty-two. I don't need SSI, I own two homes, my husband doesn't, that's my inheritance, you can undo it, just like you did it. In your four, I mean, my grandma had hazardous insurance on her with beaten. Holly, after you all yelled, I went, I'm exceptionally well insured right now. My husband and these people did this to me, I have all the proof. Indeed. And I think I'm about done, because I could go on from the time I was born, and they raped me at three months old in shared videos, is that fun? You need to get Mike to wind up here, and have him accountable, and your mayor, who's the mayor?
I am.
Well, where I come from, you're the boss. We're not playing the manager anymore, because that's the government, I'm part of the government, and I don't pay taxes for fine managers that can't manage anything but that. And I don't care you dirty look me, you better not...
You're gonna have to direct your comments this direction, ma'am, I'm sorry, you have to direct.
I'm sorry, but you know, they have bullied me, they scared me, they think it's funny watching me shake. And they, now I have five autoimmune disorders from systemic rape from the time I was born. Hate, racial hate, they killed my family, I can prove that. And a probate judge in Butler County named Gideon Palmer. And horrible things going on here, and I think it's time to get the truth out. We can, I don't hate anybody, I'm mixed, like you don't like. I have every color in them, they done. What should I call them? Anti-Algonquin Society? Secret Society of Wiggums, is that what you want me to call them? I'm not gonna call them a party, I'm just gonna call them arrogant, in aristocratic days. Should have stayed over there. We're not gonna tolerate that here, or anywhere. And the truth's coming out, it's already out. They can kill me, I got all in back. And we're gonna undig that house, and we're gonna find out what's under there, it's so important. You've kept me back my whole life. It's so horrible, you can't go to anybody, not your teachers, your principal, your firefighters, your police. Not all of them, and that dog. Stick it on Matt Maxwell, a good officer again, and disable him. It's not welcome. This is my tribal lands, and you know, it's gone through Supreme Court, and you will everyone here go by tribal law. I'm not really sure what that is, but I'm sure it's gonna be better for the people than what it is now. I know all of you are not involved in this, it's had to be horrible. So since I've learned the true history, I find myself making excuses for people. Since I grew up here, is passive-aggressive, do they go to the same demon class? Oh yeah, right here, the multi-quar, eighteen fifty-five, nineteen thirty, that inauguration was right. If I hadn't stepped up to my plate and done this, we'd all be in trouble. I don't have to follow inauguration. I'll tell everybody I got a thing I know, and then, boy, do I know a lot.
Thank you.
See, I'm gifted.
Thank you for coming.
You got a phytopathic memory, and you can believe I'm telling the truth.
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor. Take your job back, you do have responsibility, you're not an ordinary.
Okay, thank you.
We'll back you up, thank you. But that is, you have to consider, we don't, we don't agree on that either. I want my thirty thousand to screech that. Or some of us to get out of the bus and itself, okay? I'm gonna leave, sorry to have to say that.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on the concept of Owl's Landing? That's kind of what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's my property, the whole, whole house.
Okay.
Property, that's what they named now.
Any further discussion on Owl's Landing? Hearing none. That will come up for second reading at our next meeting as well. And we do have second, one second reading, and I would invite Heather to read it for us.
An ordinance, amending ordinance thirty-six fifty-four supplemental budget ordinance number five to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you.
Oh, first I need a, I need a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, and now we go to Joe, sorry, Joe.
Thanks. The first one is the budget adjustment for wages and salaries for the full-time preschool teacher, and that's twenty-seven, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars. And two other items came up since the first reading. The first has to do with, to make an adjustment for funds that got deposited into the Enforcement and Education Fund, fourteen thousand, three-seventy-eight, twenty-eight. At the, in December, the, the Auditor of State decided to try a new, it's a new, new program, it's in the first phase this year. And they didn't release any guidance until May of actually what you're supposed to do with the money. So we deposited in the Enforcement and Education Fund, but this money is actually going towards wages of officers taking continued professional training. So you have to move it to the fund where their wages are actually recorded, which is the general fund, rather than trying to redo the budget of the Enforcement and Education Fund. The easiest thing to do is just transferring the money from the Enforcement and Education Fund to the general fund, and that's what this would do.
Okay.
And then the next item is to make an adjustment for the payment of retainage for sinuses for Oxford Area Trail Phase Two construction. And during twenty-twenty-one, the project did get closed out, and due to an oversight, we forgot about the retainage. So this is just so we can pay them the retainage. We've had the money, we've been holding it, and there was some processes they had to go through with the state of Ohio. So they requested payment, so this is just to appropriate the fund so we can return their money to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Seeing none, councillors, do you have any questions, comments, concerns? I'm seeing none. Please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted, thank you, Joe, we appreciate your efforts on that. And we'll move now to remarks from city council and staff, and I'll start with city manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you, your honor. Just a few items, I did send out an email to council today about the visit to our sister city, Diffrane, that the mayor and Dr. Case, Snively and I attended. And it was a wonderful program. They had their other sister cities from France, Italy and Germany, so we had a chance to meet with those guests as well. And it was just a wonderful program. Bill had posted a lot of pictures, so I appreciate that, of our visit there. And I know, I got a chance to meet all nineteen council members this time, and I remember when Bill and I were speaking to this one young council person, a lot of the issues they're dealing with are similar to the ones that we're dealing with. Housing affordability, climate sustainability, and others, so
Exactly.
You know, even though we're miles apart, we're still dealing with some of the same issues in our communities. So that was a wonderful visit, and appreciate the opportunity to, to renew our friendship with them. A couple of other items is myself, Joe, and his staff, and Jessica and Kim and I have been meeting with our healthcare consultant and our third-party administrator ally, Benefit, to discuss our health program. We do this each year, and of course, it's very important if we're gonna manage our costs. Just to give you one example of rising costs that we witnessed in our program is prescription drugs. And I noted that back in two thousand and eleven, our prescription drugs were less than two-hundred thousand. They're now about eight-hundred thousand, so it just gives you an idea in about a little more than ten years what we've seen in costs. So, you know, from time to time, we make some adjustments to manage our program and control our costs. The last thing I wanted to share with you is we did get a notice from BQ Energy that they were acquired by Clean Capital recently, and there's, there've been no changes in staff. We'll have the same staff working on our project. And, you know, they are working on the engineering for it, the design, working out the interconnection agreement with Duke Energy. Clean Capital has been purchasing other firms, they, so, you know, we think it'll be good for our project, but as I said earlier, there'll be no changes, same staff working on it, and they're moving forward with our project. And that's all I have this evening, unless you have some questions for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike?
Nothing, thank you.
Anything from the police department?
Just to follow up real quick on assistant city manager Green's comments about the two new officers. We do have two new officers that started today at the police academy, and I'm sure Chief Jones will bring them before you, as they get closer to graduating the academy and coming out to the street, and we get some uniforms fitted to them, so they'll, they'll look appropriate to come and get sworn in before council. So that'll be a few months down the road, but I didn't want to leave that one hanging and let you guys wonder where, where they were. But it'll be a few months, and we'll get them back up here to meet on you.
Super, thanks. Thank you very much. Joe?
Nothing, thank you.
Chief Deathridge?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, I can still talk. Sam?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jessica?
Nothing, thank you.
Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Ben?
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Glenn?
I would like to thank the city, especially Enjoy Oxford and Person Rec. It was a fantastic July four celebration weekend that we had. I've gone, I went to all three events, the Red Brick, excuse me, the Red Brick, Friday, the
Freedom Fest.
Well, no, the parade, and then the Freedom Fest, and they all looked very well attended. Everybody seemed to have a great time. There were no issues that I heard about or saw, and it just seemed like a success all around. So thanks again, this weekend is one of those reasons why I like living in the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Thank you.
I would like to echo those sentiments. The, the whole weekend was just such a huge success, from Art in the Park to Paint the Squad Car. It was fantastic to see people out in the city interacting with each other, even though, I mean, I saw so many people look straight up at the sky, see bolts of lightning streak across it, and still stay uptown. So, I'm really impressed, so kudos to our city staff for putting on such amazing events all weekend. I know that has to be really hard work and really tiring, but it was really worth it. And to echo councillor Ellerby's point, that is what makes me really happy to live in Oxford. I don't know, Fourth of July this year has been tough. It's tough to feel like there's a ton to celebrate at the moment, especially when we think about freedom and independence and what all of that means. And the reason that I was in that parade is because I'm really proud of the way that our town does democracy. We really look forward to putting our constituents first, and I think that's something that we try to maintain up here, and it's something that I see reflected in the actions and the really, really hard work of our city staff every single day. So I'm really proud of our town, and I'm really particularly proud of this weekend, especially when I think about the fact that we were safely in a parade on Saturday, and there are citizens in our country who were not safe when they were attending their town's parade thirty-six hours ago. So in that note, I just, I know, you know, we passed the resolution to put forth, you know, the do-something resolution, and it's a little disheartening to come in here week after week, or bi-weekly after bi-weekly, and say, hey, there was another mass shooting, and this is not okay. So, again, on the theme of freedom and independence, I want us to think about the freedom to and the freedom from. So as was the case yesterday morning, we should expect that people should be free from harm when they attend a Fourth of July parade. And we balance that with people being free to have assault rifles. So, you know, it's just, it's something to think about. I know we've set up here a lot that our hands are pretty tied when it comes to legislation like that, but it is something to think about, you know, people should be free from harm while watching their city's Fourth of July parade. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, shut up.
I have some questions about the Clean Capital acquisition, because they didn't, they, BQ sold the project to Clean Capital, right?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
BQ Energy sold our project to Clean Capital?
They were acquired, the company, BQ Energy was acquired by Clean Capital. And so, in our, as you know, we signed a option to lease with BQ Energy, and in that option to lease, I believe there is a provision that allows them to transfer that option to lease to any other company. So they were acquired by Clean Capital. BQ Energy has been focused on brownfield development and landfill projects with solar, and Clean Capital has a much bigger portfolio. So there'll be no changes in our project. In fact, the same staff continue to work on it. They'll be a subsidiary of Clean Capital. So I just wanted you to know that, since we were notified of that last week.
It just looks, I'm looking up Clean Capital, and they have spent eight-hundred million dollars across the country buying up tons of these projects.
Yeah.
I always get a little leery when there's any type of corporatization, basically trying to own the clean energy grid. And I'm assuming we have no say, because BQ has already leased it, right?
Right. I mean, I'd have to read the option to lease, and I don't know, I mean, as we all know, there are lots of consolidations occurring, acquisitions. I'm not real fond of them either, but, you know, it's a fact of life with a lot of the uncertainty in the energy market right now.
I guess the concern I have is that when you have one company controlling so much of the market, they can up the price super high, and then you run into like problems such as the insulin shortage and other, and baby formula. So, anytime there's one company that's getting their greedy little paws on all of this, it makes me a little nervous.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, I'm with you. You know, I don't believe the FTC had to review it or anything like that, but, you know, it is a fact of life. I think we still want to move forward with our project, and, you know, it's, it's good for our community. You know, we'll have to look at each step, at some point, they're gonna want to exercise that lease. And, you know, we're not under agreement to purchase that energy. They're looking to sell it to, you know, a And, you know, we're not under agreement to purchase that energy, they're looking to sell it to, you know, another utility, uh, so on. So, uh, they'll have to be somewhat competitive if they're gonna be successful with that, because, you know, as you know, with our, uh, electric aggregation program, it's a fairly competitive price for the clean power that we're purchasing, so I'll keep you posted. Uh, but I, you know, I understand your concerns, and I share some of them, you know, I'm not big on acquisitions in the progressive area. We fought a lot of acquisitions in the railroad industry and others, and, uh, so hopefully our, uh, federal government is watching these acquisitions closely.
Amber?
Um, I wanna, he's not here tonight, but I want to thank Casey for all his hard work with the Fourth of July Parade, and, um, Jessica also for your work with Art in the Park, we had a successful, um, sort of public art event, and it, if you go uptown on the chain link fence that's kind of cordoning off the construction, you'll see some art hanging up there, and it was really creative, and hopefully we can, we can try it again and do it as a proof of concept. Uh, I want to say a few words, since I, I missed the last meeting, and this happened between both meetings, about the overturning of Roe v. Wade, and I say this respectfully, knowing that there are people in my hearing who, um, are happy with the decision and have very deeply held beliefs about that decision. Um, I think it was the wrong decision. Uh, I want to say that I, I don't think there's any freedom without reproductive freedom. And when I think about the women in my ancestry who were held as slaves, whether it was in the Caribbean or in the United States, reproductive freedom was something they absolutely did not have. Um, it's what allowed the slave trade to, um, grow as much as it did in this country. Um, this is gonna affect women, uh, across the board, um, but it's gonna affect some women more than others. Uh, women who don't have means, uh, women living in some states versus others, and even though this was a decision that happened in the Supreme Court and is affecting different states, uh, differently, we're gonna feel it at the local level as well. Um, but speaking specifically about black women, we know that the United States, first of all, has some of the worst maternal mortality rates of any Western sort of industrialized, uh, nation. And black women in this country are up to four times more likely to die in childbirth than white women, and in Ohio, it's about two-point-five times more likely. Uh, so I have real concerns, we're, we're going to see the effects, and I think there are a lot of people who support this today who don't know what their situation may be, uh, down the line, uh, when they find themselves pregnant with a, with a pregnancy that they cannot bring to term safely. Uh, so, uh, again, you know, I, I just want to speak on behalf of those of us who are disappointed with this decision. Um, but I also know that hopelessness is the enemy of progress, and, uh, I want to encourage us, those of us who are concerned, um, to practice hope not as a feeling, but as a discipline. And, uh, to engage in hope as a practice, to see the kinds of changes that we want to see, uh, in our democracy for a true freedom for everyone.
Thank you. Jason?
I'd just like to thank Councilor French and Councilor Franklin for those words, I completely agree. Other than that, I don't have much to add.
Um, I want to, uh, thank the city manager for, uh, helping us, uh, have a successful visit to our sister city Differding. Um, one of the things I learned was that it's Differding, it's not Dipperdolge, although it looks like it. Um, that the same young, uh, council member instructed us on how the locals, uh, say the name of the, the city. Um, it, it was a really, a, a very good visit. Um, their council and their mayor send their greetings to us and to our community. Uh, it was, I guess, apropos, given their failed attempt to come see us, that virtually every flight that we had scheduled to go there and return, I might add for me, uh, was delayed, canceled, rescheduled, and, uh, so getting over there for us was a forty-hour trip. But I can say that it was worthwhile, and, uh, we were shown great hospitality, and, uh, we have more pictures to share, and, uh, the city manager shared some of the places that we visited with council. Um, I want to also congratulate Casey and, uh, everybody that was involved in Freedom Fest. Um, I, I thought everything was handled really well, and it was, uh, for all of the employees of the city who worked hard to make that happen, it's very much appreciated, and I echo the comments that this, that's the kind of town that we want to live in, it's the kind of city we want to live in. And, uh, I was glad to see the return of the, uh, Independence Day Parade. I think we can do better, I think we need more than just fire engines. I really liked the parade, don't get me wrong. And I loved seeing our new pumper, new pumper was very cool, but it was right behind the horses. And I, I got a conversation with the, uh, the people who own the horses, and the horses freaked out every time they honked the horn. And I also saw little children freaking out every time the, so maybe we could cut down on the horn a little bit, um, and, uh, try and encourage more floats. But I, I, even with all of that, I really, I enjoyed the whole event, and the music, by the way, was fabulous. I, it was one of the better, better ones. Um, so the other thing is parking meters, and, um, I would like the staff to give us a report on whether it is possible during events like the, um, Freedom Fest and events like Red Brick Friday, and events like the Thursday Music Festival, if we could, uh, not charge people on the, the, um, parking meters, most of which, a lot of people are gonna be there more than two hours. And, uh, I just think we want people uptown, and we want people to be at our businesses, and we want people to come forward and, and be there. As the city manager knows, I don't think we should have the meters at that rate during the summer anyway, when there's not as big a need for turnover, 'cause that is the reason that we charge meters, is to ensure turnover, and I don't think we have that same need in the summer. Uh, the other thing is that some of these meters, like the one at the Lot Fifty-two, um, I have heard four different people came up to me at the Freedom Fest saying that they were flummoxed, uh, and they were not able to figure out how to make that work. And they tried, and they put their information in, they followed the directions. If the sun is on it, it's very difficult to read those directions. Um, I went up to it, and I tried for about five or ten minutes to make it work, and I couldn't do it. Um, so my PhD does not help with our parking meter machine. And I, I think either we get it so that it works, or we don't, and it's easy for people to understand, or we just don't charge people fines for not paying it when they really have no ability to pay it. And, and there are a lot of people who were complaining to me at the Freedom, at the, yeah, at the festival, with the, the music festival. Hey, what's wrong, I couldn't get it, and one person said they couldn't read it, the other person said they tried, and they're, it kept, uh, giving them the wrong information, and they never got the, the things scheduled. So I'd like us to look into that, if, if that's possible. If there's no other business before council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.